Charles Jefferson, Max Mosky, Martrell Davis. And from Northwestern University, Glenn Hajost, Jackie Grinwalds, Kaylee Wetstein. And the volunteer who was given special recognition was Bill Logan. I have two proclamations. One is Evanston Public Service Week, May 3rd through 7th, and National Volunteer Week, April 18th through 24th. And one proclamation which I will read for National Drinking Water Week. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of our community is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through 8th, 2010, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Evanston. And Mr. Stonebeck, are you here?
Yes, this is for you.
Thank you. My name is Dave Stonebeck. I'm the Director of Utilities. During National Drinking Water Week, Evanston will be starting its campaign for drinking tap water. We were successful in receiving a grant from the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant to purchase water bottles to promote the drinking of tap water. Bottled water is considered to be not energy efficient. It takes three times the amount of water to produce the bottled water as it does to fill the bottled water, plus then the plastic itself uses petroleum. Then you have the trucking of the bottles to the store and then to your home. With tap water, the pipes are already in the ground. You turn open your spigot and you're going to get water right there. So we encourage everybody to stop using bottled water, refill your reusable bottled waters, and save energy and conserve our resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, do you have public announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, I have three presentations and one brief announcement. And I'll do the announcement first. Tomorrow night at 7:00, we have a town hall meeting hosted by NICOR. This is on April 27th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Then we have three presentations, and our first presentation is from Evanston Hospital, North Shore University Health Systems. We have JP Gallagher, who's going to provide a presentation. And take it away, Mr. Gallagher. Just one moment. Did we lose our presentation?
Sorry.
What are you doing, Dave? Members of council also have the hard copy at their desk.
I have five minutes to...
You probably will have that long at this point.
Exactly. Time for hand puppets. Okay.
I can actually do that, but we're...
All right.
We have new technology. If I can, actually, if I might, I'll change the order, and we'll have a brief discussion on census. We will have representatives from Northwestern University and from downtown Evanston discuss their work so far on census 2010. Lucille Krasnow is going to come up first. You can come over here. I'll turn the light back on. And also Carolyn DeLutry from downtown Evanston.
Hi, I'm Lucille Krasnow. And Carolyn DeLutry is here from downtown Evanston, just to fill you in a little bit about some success stories that have to do with the census. City Manager Wally Bobkowitz asked us to do this... There's Gillian calling. She was going to join us from the Associated Student Government. We'll see if she can come by, too. Wally asked us to come by and talk a little bit about what was going on with the census and the successes. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we did at Northwestern and what we're hoping are the results, although on the website for the census as of now, they don't have particularly good results for the Northwestern end. It's at 71 percent, but our understanding is they haven't been able to update that for quite some time due to some glitches in their systems. Northwestern really understood the importance of doing a really good job and having as many students as we could complete the census. We know that according to the city figures, that it brings in about $980 per person for each of the next 10 years. So we wanted to make sure that we had a real complete count. So 10 years ago, it was a lot easier because we were able to capture, in a sense, all of the on-campus students because we had a housing lottery, and they literally had to show up to sign up for the lottery. Well, 10 years later, everything is sort of virtual, and students don't have to make appearances for much of anything on the campus. Everything is done by computer. So we really had to get creative and think about what would we do. And originally, I was going to do a whole big plan, both for off-campus students and on-campus students. Off-campus students were going to be included because we were going to have them fill out the census forms, collect all of them, and then have a huge raffle. I was putting together literally hundreds of prizes that students would be able to have, from computers to theater tickets in town, or all kinds of things. Unfortunately, the Census Bureau decided that they had to mail in off-campus. Off-campus students would have to mail in all of their responses, and we couldn't collect them. So that canceled that. So for off-campus students, what we did is we had just a huge blitz of information. We did emails. The Associated Student Government, ASG, really assisted us. I'm sorry, Gillian Lopez, who was just calling me, was in an exam until 8:00, and she was going to try and come over very quickly, but I'm not sure she's going to make it in time for this. But the Associated Student Government sent out information over Facebook, over listservs, Twitter. They did all kinds of things for off-campus students. We send bulk emails through Student Affairs, so we're hoping that many of them filled it out. On-campus, it was really a question of whether they would feel that Evanston was, in fact, their primary residence. So I was wondering, what could we do? And it was a competitive, you know, situation for us to see. If we came up with some great prizes, would that turn into a competition and would, in fact, the students fill it out? So what I arranged was that all residence halls and all sororities and fraternities on campus could go into the competition by having their residence hall or sorority or fraternity fill in the forms. And what we have done is for the highest participating residence hall, for those in one category up to 85 students, there'll be a $250 cash prize. For residence halls from 86 to 150 people, there'll be a $500 prize. And for places like Foster Walker, one of the biggest ones that have more than 500 people, there will be a $750 cash prize. Everybody got on board. There were emails and Facebook things flying across campus, and it became very fun and very competitive. And from what we understand, both from what the Census Bureau has been able to tell us but not be able to post, it looks like all of those dorms, residence halls, and the fraternities and sororities are above 95 percent. So we're not sure. Thank you. And one of the problems is we're not sure about the graduate dorms because the graduate dorms are not considered to be group quarters because they have families living in them. So the Census Bureau had to handle those themselves in the same way that they would the off-campus students. So that if anything lowers the numbers at Northwestern, it might be those graduate dorms. So we're just thrilled, we're delighted, and we're so glad we were able to participate in that way. And I do want to give a plug that the Associated Student Government was the vehicle that put out all of the PR. And they have worked with all of you and with many projects in the city for a long time, and we just think they did a fantastic job of it. Now I'd like Carolyn to talk about the wonderful project that downtown Evanston did to support the efforts of the census, too.
Thank you, Lucille, and Madam Mayor and the City Council. Downtown Evanston, we work with Northwestern University in a lot of different areas, but one of the things we came together on was the census event as well. And with Gillian from the Associated Student Government, and Lucille, and actually Craig Sklenar from the city, the four of us, including my staff Laura Focal, we had joint meetings to discuss what could we do as kind of a thank you for filling out your census forms. And so we put together a community savings weekend in mid-April to thank everyone and just as a way, again, to remind people to come out. And it was geared towards residents in Evanston as well as Northwestern students and faculty to come out and shop in downtown Evanston. We had 41 businesses actually participate and post on our website any specials for the entire weekend. And we know that from American Apparel, Wine Styles, LaMoye Hardware, and numerous other businesses, that they printed the coupon, brought it into the stores over the weekend, and we saw results of that. So it was a great partnership with the city and with the university, and we're working on something different for next year to do in the spring again. So thank you very much.
I have one last just announcement. I wanted to also state that Craig Sklenar on your staff of the city has been fabulous to work with. He was a terrific partner. He was in touch with all of us and many other entities throughout Evanston in terms of putting all of this together. So he was very supportive, he was very helpful, and he would like me tonight to make sure that I tell everyone who might be listening that still has an interest in filling out the census, that you can call the Telephone Questionnaire Assistance Center at 1-866-872-8686. And I think the message is, there is still time, correct, Mayor, to fill out the census and to participate, and we're hoping that all of the numbers across Evanston continue to increase. And it was a pleasure to be part of this process, and we hope that all of the numbers in Evanston turn out to be great. Thanks.
I just wanted to say thank you to both Carolyn and Lucille. I know that you've spent a lot of time, and I received a lot of those emails. Really appreciate it. I know for, you know, the next 10 years, it'll make a big difference for our dollars coming in the door. So really, brilliant. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
My name's JP Gallagher. I'm the President of Evanston Hospital, and I've had the privilege to serve in this role since October of 2008. I've been with North Shore University Health System for over eight years, most of that time at our Evanston Hospital campus. And I appreciate the chance to come before you this evening and use this opportunity to update you in terms of what North Shore's been up to, as well as what specifically we've been doing at Evanston Hospital. I'd be happy to do this perhaps on an annual basis as you see fit. But my intent tonight is really to do a few things. One is to update you on recent developments, and the second and third is to really talk about the impact of our services on the community that we serve and the role we play as a large employer and an important partner to the city. So with that, what I'd like to do is start with the basic question of, who are we? And while most of this is perhaps familiar, North Shore University Health System has seen a lot of change since 2008. For starters, we were Evanston Northwestern Healthcare just two years ago. We also added a fourth hospital. We have Evanston as our flagship teaching hospital, Glenbrook Hospital in Glenview, Highland Park Hospital in the Highland Park community, and then Skokie Hospital, formerly Rush North Shore Medical Center, all of which are important elements of our system. Our name really reflects the fact that North Shore signifies our commitment to the communities we serve across a broad geography, which continues to grow. Our emphasis on university is a reflection of the fact that as our teaching affiliation with the University of Chicago's Pritzker School of Medicine has evolved. And then also our focus in terms of health system is the fact that we are an integrated health system that really focuses on providing all services to our patients. In terms of some simple numbers, we employ approximately 9,000 people. We have over 2,400 physicians on our medical staff. That includes a 700 physician, multi-specialty physician group practice that operate out of over 75 office locations throughout the extended geography. And as I mentioned, we are the principal teaching affiliate for the University of Chicago's Pritzker School of Medicine. And although not pictured, a couple of other important elements worth noting, and they do have an Evanston emphasis to them, the North Shore Research Institute is a primary vehicle through which we do our clinical and translational research with a heavy emphasis on clinical outcomes and clinical trials. And then our North Shore Foundation is our primary philanthropic entity. They do a lot of the fundraising and really serve as an important community partner with many of the organizations that we support. To just give you a little bit of a graphic here, what I'd like to do is this is a map that highlights kind of the geographic areas that we now have a presence in. And it might be surprising to some of you to recognize that we now serve over 51 ZIP codes in our primary service area. And just to focus on the highlights, we've got the four hospitals. Those are noted by the blue and black crosses. But then we also have the Research Institute and the Foundation here in Evanston, along with our corporate headquarters. And then the red dots really connote many of the medical offices around the geography. We go as far north as Gurnee, as far west as Lake Zurich and Arlington Heights, and then as far south into the city of Chicago. And with this presence comes extensive community obligations throughout this geography as well. Now, I'd like to take a minute, as I think has been the case for almost everybody, it's been both a challenging but a very busy year for us. And we've also, in the course of this past year, had some noteworthy achievements that we're quite proud of. First, we have been recognized once again as a top 100 hospital and a top 15 teaching hospital by Thompson Reuters. We've now received this award 14 times, more than any other hospital in the country. So it's something that we try not to take for granted, but thankfully has been validated over quite some period. We recently received news back in February that we received the designation for excellence in nursing from the American Nurses Credentialing Committee. And that essentially has designated us as a magnet destination for nursing care across the entire system. So we had a team of surveyors that came in, did a thorough evaluation of the quality of nursing care and patient care, and we were pleased to now be the first hospital system in all of Illinois to achieve this across all of our locations. We have had a significant investment in electronic medical records going back to 2002. We've been recognized by the Health Information Management Society as one of two leading systems in the country in terms of our adoption of EMRs. And we recently were recognized by the Commission on Cancer for our outstanding clinical care and research in all aspects of cancer care. Our Research Institute, which has a strong track record, is ranked ninth in the nation and first in the state of Illinois for NIH funding among independent teaching and research hospitals. And patient quality and safety, something that is very much, I think, on everybody's mind, is something that we have continued to advance. We received the John M. Eisenberg Award in patient safety, and that related to our efforts to reduce MRSA, which is a staph bacteria that you hear about, got a lot of media attention over the last several years, can be very dangerous if not managed appropriately. We undertook a proactive program to really identify and aggressively use antibiotics to minimize its presence in the hospital, and we've been recognized nationally for that. Our medical group, which I mentioned before, has been recognized as one of the top three in the country. And then we also take our role as a responsible employer very seriously. Workforce Chicago recently recognized North Shore for our efforts in employee development and learning programs to improve the workplace. So a lot going on. I'd now like to talk about that while it's been a challenging environment, I'm very pleased that despite the economic pressures, it has not hindered our ability to provide and fulfill our commitment to the community that we serve. And this is something that I think most of you have some familiarity with, but I thought I'd talk a little bit about in more detail. As many of you know, as a non-for-profit hospital, we have a responsibility and an obligation to support our tax-exempt status. And we take this responsibility very seriously. And we're also proud of our track record and the ways in which we've worked with the communities that we serve to improve their health, both within our hospitals as well as in the broader communities. So what I'd like to do is touch on some of these categories and using the definition provided by the Illinois State's Attorney General's Office, highlight some of the elements that are very much a focus in this area. Most frequently noted is charity care. And that, simply put, is free care that we provide to patients who do not have the ability to pay and meet certain financial guidelines for a variety of services, both primary and specialty care-oriented. A government-sponsored indigent healthcare, that really relates to, and most major hospitals identify it as, the difference between the cost of providing care for Medicare and Medicaid populations compared to the revenue that's collected for those services. Most hospitals essentially spend more in providing that care than they collect for those services. So most organizations, Evanston included, keeps track of the difference between that cost and the revenue that's brought in. Subsidized health services speak to those services that essentially don't generate revenue, but that we feel are an important part of having services available to the community. So in the case of Evanston Hospital, that would include our commitment to the Level One Trauma Program and support services in the emergency department, our psychiatry department, and the mental health services that we make available generally generate very nominal revenues, but we are continuing to invest in that area. We have many programs in our perinatal area that support at-risk moms and infants to get them through critical periods and ensure their health and safety. And we also have a longstanding commitment to the Evanston Township High School Health Center, which we're both proud of and continue to support. So those are just a few of those types of programs. We have a very significant commitment to education. This is essentially training tomorrow's doctors, nurses, and other healthcare professionals through our relationships with a variety of institutions. I've mentioned our involvement in research. We have some government-sponsored programs, particularly in the areas of mental health, that we essentially provide for very little. And then language assistance services, given our diverse patient population, some in-kind contributions, volunteer work in the community. And then bad debt. And I would just spend a minute on this simply because this is an area that, given the economy, everybody is seeing a dramatic increase in, and we are certainly no exception. Bad debt really covers things like co-pays, deductibles, aspects of a patient's bill that an individual perhaps is not able to pay, or given competing obligations chooses not to pay. And this number really is proving to be the largest increase in uncompensated care for us that would otherwise be revenue the institution would collect. What I'd like to do, and I apologize for the graphic, but I'll speak to the number, is just give you a sense of the scale and put these areas in context. So for charity care across all of North Shore, we committed just under $17 million in charity care in 2009. Of that, and that's largely attributable to those patients who, as I mentioned earlier, don't have the means to pay, we provided over $10 million of that 17 through Evanston Hospital alone. So a very heavy concentration in this community in terms of supporting our obligations locally, and that was provided to over 7,000 patients. Specifically, there were 1,900 residents that came through our Evanston outpatient clinic that was a very important part of that commitment. Subsidized health services, that's the, those are the programs that we support at $14 million. And then the largest number, the government-sponsored indigent care through Medicare and Medicaid is $88 million. And then running down the rest, you see about $18 million in education, another $4 million in research, and then $736,000 in government-sponsored programs. And we've also had some commitments in wellness programs, particularly as it relates to diabetes care in some of our outerlying areas. So all in on an annual basis, North Shore has committed over $195 million in community benefits. Just a quick graphic here, I guess all presentations need to have a chart, so I've put this one in, although I probably get a failing grade on it being fairly legible. But in terms of just being able to, I think, emphasize some of the larger categories. The blue pie slice is essentially that difference between Medicare and Medicaid that we make up the gap for. The red slice is essentially that bad debt, that number that is annualized out to $47 million. And then the other piece, which is charity care, that's the light blue slice, those three pieces together make up over 76 percent of all the community benefits that we provide. So very important elements and numbers that continue to increase. Now, those are the numbers, but I'd like to sort of come back to what is our mission, and frankly, why do we exist? Simply stated, we exist to treat patients. And in the fiscal year of 2009, we treated over 420,000 patients at Evanston Hospital. Now, if you break that down, that includes nearly 20,000 patients who came in for inpatient stays, and then we had obviously a very large number of outpatient activity. This could be something as simple as an outpatient lab draw, might be an MRI or outpatient surgery. But as you can tell, a lot of our traffic and activity comes through our campus on the outpatient side. As I mentioned, our commitment through our outpatient department, the free clinic, continues to be very important to us. We supported over 9,800 patients, both adults and adolescents, through our child and adolescent clinic, over more than 21,000 visits. Our emergency room supports over 41,000 visits, and then we had just under 700 trauma visits on the Evanston Hospital campus. Now, I'd also like to just take a minute to talk a little bit about the economic impact that Evanston Hospital has. We have, while we are non-for-profit entity, we recognize the important role we play to the economic vitality of the community. And in 2009, we paid just over $2 million in taxes. This covered a variety of things, including some properties that fall under the North Shore umbrella. It also included sales tax, water and utility taxes, as well as building permits. And another element that I think is both important to note and that we take very seriously is our role as a large employer. We are the second-largest employer in the city. We have over 4,000 of our employees that actually work in the city of Evanston. And of all of our 9,000 employees, over 800 of those individuals are actually residents in Evanston. And perhaps of note to you all is the fact that those 800 individuals collect over $66 million in payroll and benefits from our organization every year. So those are dollars that we are putting into the community in support of the employees who help us to fulfill our mission. Talking a little bit more about economic benefit, we, as a large business, do try to keep our business local. And in looking at the list of vendors that we support, we, on an annual basis, have paid over $7 million to local Evanston-based businesses across a variety of areas. And we continue to be investing in our facilities. Evanston Hospital, if you've been on the campus recently, you've noticed a lot of cranes, construction crews, and whatnot. We're very pleased that we're able to make those investments. In the last couple of years, we've put, it's now that number's migrating closer to $140 million. But some of the larger investments have been the brand-new Calla Cancer Center, which opened up in March. We have now a Center for Breast Health, essentially a singular destination to provide all of a woman's breast health needs. We've, we are in the process of completing the renovations of our operating rooms, both expanding them and bringing them up to new technology standards to support them for the next several decades. That also included a new ICU. On the docket for the coming year is a new simulation training center. This is going to be a state-of-the-art facility that will allow Evanston Hospital to be a destination for both physicians locally and nationally, particularly in the areas of minimally invasive surgery, and for the treatment of acute critical care patients. And so we'll be using this to help train both physicians, nurses, and emergency medical technicians in a variety of simulation areas to make them more effective out in the field. We are expanding our psychiatric services. We're investing in both the inpatient and outpatient capacity for those services, given the need in the community. And then we've also made some major investments in stereotactic radiosurgery to help with the treatment of acute cancers. I mentioned that we have a number of community programs and partnerships, and I did just want to touch briefly on some of the ones that are probably most visible. The outpatient department, as I mentioned, really is focused on those individuals who lack insurance or are underinsured. We also have a dental center that provides dental care to those patients, as well as members of the North Shore organization. And then really, I think one of the jewels in our commitment to the community has been the 12-year relationship that we've had with the high school. And based on the statistics that we keep, nearly two-thirds of the 3,000 students on that campus have come to the center for services that we support in its entirety. We continue to work through and provide support for a number of community health and wellness events. We've supported nearly 40 Evanston-based community organizations. Some of these examples include the city's Women's Out Walking Program, the Ricky Byrd Song Race Against Hate, Family Focus, and Connections for the Homeless. In addition, we have a community advisory committee. That essentially is a group of representatives and leaders from across the community that help provide insight and feedback to the services that we're providing. So we frankly tap into their perspective to make sure that we're in tune with what the needs are locally. I'm also pleased and have appreciated the city's active involvement in that committee. Mayor Tisdall, when she was the Alderman for the 7th Ward, was a member of that committee, and we appreciate the fact that Alderman Grover continues in that capacity. Yvonda Thomas is the Director of Department of Health and Human Services, is an active member. And then we've also had Fire Chief Alan Brokowski. And we valued our relationship with the chief. And we valued our relationship with the chief and look forward to a new member from the fire department to join. We do try to stay in close touch with our neighbors. We have a neighbors committee that meets on a periodic basis to address operational issues, to make sure that we're responding to concerns that may be of interest to them. And then, I guess in the light of partnership, the one thing that I also would like to share tonight, and I'm pleased to announce, in dialogue with the city, we are pleased to commit to providing an additional automated external defibrillator, essentially an AED that will be placed in the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. So, this is a contribution that was asked of us, and we're happy to do, and will be making available shortly. In terms of what's in stock in the future, I just wanted to take a minute to talk a little bit about future plans. We fundamentally believe that really providing excellent care is all about having good doctors and good clinicians. So, we will continue to be recruiting physicians to bring additional expertise, and in some cases, to supplement capacity in areas where we have more demand than we're able to meet. We'll also be very aggressive in continuing to focus on clinical trials, and frankly, trying to demonstrate improvements in the care that we provide and the outcomes that those generate. We'll also be moving research into areas of medicine that are continuing to grow, like molecular medicine, or personalized medicine, as it's referred to, focused on individual treatment. On perhaps a more basic but immediate level, one of the things we got feedback on was that sometimes it can be difficult to come to the Evanston Hospital campus and find parking. So, we took some fairly aggressive steps in that regard, and I'd invite any of you to come. We frankly tried to make some changes, and we've limited the access for our employees. So, recognizing that really our patients and visitors need to be get, need to be able to get in quickly, I think if you pull in during regular business hours, you'll find that that's no longer a challenge. We are also in the process of conducting a community health assessment. This is essentially us taking stock, both at Evanston, as well as those other geographies that I mentioned, in terms of making sure that the services we're providing are in line with the needs of our communities. So, we look forward to engaging the city and making sure that our assessment is consistent with what the city's needs are identified as. And then, we have had some conversations and continue to be very interested in the notion of participating in some type of federally qualified health center, recognizing that there continues to be additional need that goes beyond our campus. So, hopefully, more to come in that regard. So, in closing, and I appreciate your time, I guess this statement perhaps captures this best, and that simply is one of, we really focus on trying to connect with both our patients and our partners. And I like to think that the more that we do that, the more, the stronger and the healthier that both of us will become. So, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Alderman Grover.
As you probably know, we've had a lot of discussion, particularly during our budget season, about our children's dental clinic. And I was wondering, do you see any opportunities to partner with your dental clinic, which is a fabulous dental clinic? I'm not sure if you see children there or not? Have you talked a little bit about that?
Happy to look into it and talk more about it. Most of the patients, I believe, that we see tend to be adult. Whether or not we have the ability to take care of adolescents or pediatric patients, would be happy to sit down and look at, if that's a possibility.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, for coming tonight and giving us such a great report. And thank you for the AED, for the Fleetwood Jordan Center. On behalf of all of us, we thank you. Have you, in the last couple of years, seen an uptick in the number of people in your emergency department, as families are struggling to maintain employment and health insurance coverage? Are you finding that there are a lot of residents who are using your emergency department as their primary care?
Absolutely. And while I think that's something that many hospitals are seeing, we've noticed it pretty dramatically in the last eighteen months. As I suspect many of you are aware, what's happened is, is people have lost access to insurance or the ability to have a provider who they can come to on a regular basis, the ER becomes sort of the only destination for those services. And while we've done our best to essentially meet that need, and we've worked on throughput through the ER, we do believe there are more effective ways to meet those needs, which is in part why those of us in the industry talk about medical homes and trying to find more effective ways in which to particularly meet primary care needs for patients. It's part of the reason why, although the wait for, the waitlist for our outpatient department now goes out to September, and our ability to expand that capacity is fairly limited, looking at an FQHC or some other alternatives, we're also looking through our medical group in terms of the way in which we can use some of the capabilities we have within North Shore to meet that need. That involves looking at the geography, in terms of where are the patients, and how can we identify them in a timely way and work proactively with them to help get them partnered with someone who can help manage their various illnesses. So, I would say a lot of time and effort is now being spent on trying to figure out ways in which to improve that.
One, two, actually, good comments. One, graduation in the magnet status. There's another hospital in Evanston trying to get it, and I know it's a huge process, so that's just amazing. Yes, and your garage has gotten much better. I'm over there more regularly than I'd like. Really appreciate that. And the clinical trial that you're increasing?
Yes.
Do you see that as a large increase in revenue for you? As the awards for the clinical trials, and do you feel like you'll be able to actually get people to do the clinical trials?
Sure. So, I would say our primary interest in clinical trials is that we believe it, in a measurable way, helps to demonstrate that the care we're providing is better. So, you generally don't do it for the purpose of making money. What you try to do is make sure you're covering your costs as best you can. One of the areas in which we have a lot of experience of this is cancer. So, we have a number of clinicians who are excellent scientists and researchers as well, and they attract a lot of industry funding for their research. And as you take the time to understand just how involved and somewhat cumbersome it can be, what we found, though, is that when you do that, the quality of your program increases the visibility of those services, and frankly, you're able to publish and demonstrate that you're advancing that field. So, I would say it's largely complementary. If you're doing it well, you're probably covering your costs, but it's generally not sort of a revenue growth source.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And next, we have Erica Storley to give an update on the city's website.
I'm the web developer here at the city of Evanston, and I'm very excited to talk today about the next iteration of the city of Evanston website. The existing city website, the version that's currently up, went up live in 2004. Right now, it uses an outdated client-side software to update, which means we have to install the software on people's computers to let them update it. And it uses three different pieces of software to update, one for news, one for calendar, and one for the rest of the site. Makes it difficult and cumbersome to maintain. In 2004, we had about nineteen thousand people, unique people, coming to the site every month. Right now, we're averaging about forty-eight thousand, so more than double. There's an increasing and heavy reliance on the website, so we wanted to do this revitalization to make sure that we can accommodate future growth and also support our existing users. So, the new COE website will go live, hopefully, in June 2010. It's our target date right now. It uses a web-based content management system called Movable Type. It consolidates updating to a single piece of software that can be used anywhere, so you will not need to be at your work computer or on the city network to update the website. And the CMS is an open-source product, so there are no software licensing costs. It makes it easier to update in the future and to install security patches. Here's a look at the design. It's not quite as clear as it could be, but you kind of get the gist. One of the most exciting parts about the new website will be the citizen dashboard. On the upper right side, there will be a login box where you can go to access all of the online services that are available on the website, and then, more to come in the future. Also, there will be content scheduling and automatic expiration. Right now, everything that we do on the website is a manual process. If we want to add something to the homepage, we have to do it and then push it live right away, and now, we'll be able to schedule it in advance and set it to go live at a specific time. In addition to that, we'll be able to expire it. So, if an event is over at midnight on January tenth, it'll go live, or it'll go away all on its own without us having to go and do it the next morning. We're switching to Google search for our site search, so that will provide with, provide us with a better engine for retrieving results on the website. Hopefully, we get the Google bid, and we can really be all Google. So, here's a look at the new calendar. Some nice features of this is a better filter to really get down to the level of events that you would like to see. We're putting in more parks and recreation events. Currently, there's not quite as many on there as we'd like, and it'll also reduce the clutter. Also, on the news page, this is one of the most exciting parts. We currently have no way to archive the news, so when an event is over or a news article is passed, it's gone forever. Now, we will be able to hold them in the archive, so people can view them at any time in a searchable and convenient way. We'll also be categorizing the news articles, so that you can quickly and easily find an article on anything related to sustainability, or parks, or forestry, or whatever the case may be. Additionally, the Movable Type content management system gives us an awesome platform to which we can accommodate future growth. In alignment with the launch of the new website, we're going to do a Code-A-Thon on June fifth. This is a pretty exciting event, the first one we've ever done here. We're recruiting coders, graphic designers, and computer users of all levels to come in for a day and help us migrate the existing website into the new content management system. There shouldn't be, there should be something available for all levels. So, it'll be free lunch and lots of goodies, and a good time will be had by all, I promise. You can register online at cityofevanston.org/Code-A-Thon. That's all I have. Any questions?
Erica, I'm sorry, I have a question. If the Alderman wants to get something on the city website, will there be a more systematic process to do that? For example, a neighborhood meeting or something like that? I mean, it's always a little battle to, it's not simple, you know?
I would like to make it as easy as possible, so we'll have to explore that, because right now, Wally's preferred method is that the requests go from you to him, and then to me.
Well, one of the better parts of this will be to be able to schedule in advance, once we know. We don't have to wait until we get into the window of two weeks for your event to come up. We could be scheduling items four months in advance. I'm assuming they'll fire off two weeks in advance and go away right after the meeting. So, hopefully, we'll be able to be a little bit more organized in getting all of the Aldermanic events up on the website.
Thank you. Before we get the Google award, what are our chance, what are the possibilities for getting our calendar from the website to translate to our mobile devices, so that we can access it without accessing it like a webpage, which on most mobile devices is very, very small?
Right. Probably phase two of the website integration will be to focus more on the availability of our website on mobile applications, but with the new website, we will have the calendar in an RSS format, so it'll be easy for us to repopulate that same data in a different form, to go right to mobile devices similar to the news.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do you have communications?
No communications, Madam Mayor.
Yep. Sorry about that. Could I have a motion to recess the city council for purposes of hearing on a bond?
Move.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I have appointed Grant Farrar to be the hearing officer, and here he is.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
You were there before you got appointed.
Just trying to move proceedings along as quickly as possible. This hearing is called pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. This is a hearing pursuant to the issuance of the bonds relative to Revenue Bonds Series 2010, the Caravalli Montessori School. This hearing is to solicit any public comments relative to this issue, and before I call for comments on that, I would like to read a number of findings into the record. The hearing, the notice of meeting has been published in the Evanston Review on April eighth, 2010. The proof of publication for the Evanston Review has been presented to the city clerk and shall be filed with the minutes of this meeting. This hearing is for the purpose of conducting comments, soliciting comments, and hearing any other comments regarding the proposed issuance of the city of Evanston Revenue Bonds Series 2010, Caravalli Montessori School, in the maximum aggregate face amount of five million, five hundred thousand dollars. The school has represented to the city that the bonds do not and shall never constitute an indebtedness or obligation of the city, the state of Illinois, or any political subdivision thereof within the purview of any constitutional limitation or statutory provision, or a charge against the credit or general taxing powers, if any, of the state, the city, or any other political subdivision thereof. The bonds are special limited obligations of the city payable solely out of the revenues and income of the city derived pursuant to the loan agreement by and among the city, the school, and the Northern Trust Company as the initial lender and purchaser of the bonds. No owner of the bond shall have the right to compel any exercise of the taxing power of the city, the state, or any other political subdivision thereof to pay the bonds, or the interest, or premium, if any, thereon. Again, this hearing is conducted pursuant to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. At this time, as the hearing officer, I would ask that any members of the public identify themselves and deliver any comments pursuant to this issuance. And I invite any members of the council to have any comments pursuant to the issuance. Seeing no...
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions, Mr. Farrar. One is, who drafted the ordinance?
I did.
That is before us tonight. Thank you. And have we complied with all notice provisions for this hearing?
Yes, yes. Notice was published in the Evanston Review. The posting was effectuated throughout City Hall, and that has all been satisfied.
Seeing no other lights, I think you've answered.
Thank you. I hereby adjourn this hearing, and Madam Mayor and members of the council, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have citizen comment, and two people are signed up to speak, Janad Rizki and Richard Katz.
All right. I'm sorry? No, he's camping the bag. I was at the Collegy Center this weekend, and I guess the city had a campaign on these porch lights, Evanston porch lights. Well, this may be a small point, but these don't work for porches, really. This is an indoor light. This is a porch light. This is what you should use on a porch. The city's at no risk, but they won't work. Technology is interesting, because I was just, these cameras out here have been one of my favorite topics for a long time. And I, my problem with cameras isn't so much the cameras, but whether the city has any way to protect the public that might be looked on with the cameras. I mean, I frankly, any Alderman, will you want a camera across the street from your house, looking at your house? That's sort of the thing. What provisions do we have to protect the public to know what's going on with these cameras? And I think where you're putting them, the community also sends signals of, it may not be so attractive to live in these areas, because they're high-crime areas, that's why you're saying that. But, I think the last time I asked about getting information about these quite a few years ago, I was told to go, go to court to see the tapes. So, I mean, I'd like to know what policies the city will have in place for people when they put these cameras in their neighborhoods, to see just what they're looking at. And I think that's very, very important, so people aren't sure that these are really looking in their windows. And that's really all I'm going to say tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have a few brief comments about the installation of the watch cameras. We'll be brief. I've made copies of this for you all. I hope there's enough there. My first concerns, and I'm simply going to read from this, "My first concern is that strategic or unspoken, and what is the message that their presence sends to Evanstonians? Whatever else they may signify, the presence of cameras will serve as a constant reminder to Evanstonians that cameras denote quote-unquote 'bad' areas. And what message will the presence of cameras send to our neighboring suburbs about Evanston?" The third concern is about the nature of the crimes that are bringing this type of solution to the table. From a broader perspective, what is Evanston doing to prevent these types of crimes from happening in the first place? The fourth broad area of concern is that the intent behind the placement of cameras is to catch people being bad or criminal. Will there be an equivalent directive to catch people being good, and then going out to reward them? While this sounds novel, sound psychological principles of differential reinforcement suggest that to change behavior in a positive direction, rewarding good behavior is more effective than simply punishing undesirable behavior, and it quote "teaches" unquote "people" to be good. Finally, there's a lot of data that suggested cameras aren't all that effective or efficient at preventing crime, and only marginally effective at detecting crime, which leads me to the question, what specific crimes are these cameras supposed to reduce? How are they specifically going to reduce these crimes? Who's going to keep count, and how? For the cameras to work, their video feeds need to be constantly monitored, which possibly means having someone watch the video feeds 24 hours a day, which sounds expensive to me. And I simply would want the council and the mayor to consider these parameters before committing themselves to this technology. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes from the special city council meeting of April 12, and approval of the regular minutes, regular council minutes of April 13. The Administration Public Works Committee requests your approval of the payroll through April 11, in the amount of $2,188,281.47, and the city bills through April 27, in the amount of $1,322,500.35. The committee recommends approval also of a contract for the Evanston Water Utility Asbestos Abatement from, the award was given to American Environmental Solutions, in the amount of $67,000. Next, I believe Alderman Jean-Baptiste, you want item A 3.2 off the consent agenda, correct? That will be discussed by the committee chair. Contract for water distribution system valves was awarded to HD Supply Water Works in the amount of $27,112. Next, we have the purchase of trees and planting services for the spring planting season. This is through, as you recall, the Suburban Tree Consortium, in the amount of $99,778.50. Next item is off the consent agenda, and that has to do with the camera project. Next is acceptance of a recycling grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the purchase of a recycling truck for the commercial area. The award was in the amount of $55,000, to be matched by the city of $55,000. Next is Resolution 26R10, which authorizes the city manager to sign an Illinois Department of Transportation Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation for Construction Funding for Improvements to Sheridan Road and Forest Avenue between Burnham Place and Chicago Avenue. The funding from this work will be from the federal funds in the amount of $3,004,173, state funds in the amount of $522,553, and from our capital improvement program, $80,236. Next item is for action also, and that's Resolution 27R10, which authorizes the city manager to sign the Illinois Department of Transportation Construction Engineering Services Agreement for Federal Participation with Trans Systems Corporation for the Phase 3 Engineering Services to Rehabilitate Sheridan Road. The work will be from the CIP Street Resurfacing Fund, in the amount of $306,962, and this will be reimbursed 100% by federal, $82,738, and state funds in the amount of $224,224. The next item is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. The next item is for action, Ordinance 26O10, which approving and authorizing revenue bonds and related matters to the Caravelli Conduit Financing Agreement with the City of Evanston. This is in the amount, I believe, 5.5 million? Is that right, correct? Okay. That's for action tonight. The next item is under planning and development, and the committee is, I'm going to request that this first item, Resolution 28R10, be removed from the consent agenda, will be addressed by the committee chair. Item P2 is for action, and approves the Sidewalk Cafe for Bistro Bordeaux at 618 Church Street. This is a first-time request, and therefore, it's before the council. Next item is for introduction-only, Ordinance 27O10, which amends portions of the city code 2811, and amends portions of Ordinance 133O08, related to records of Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA, and planned commission meetings and fees for certain applications to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this also includes the evening of charges for R1 Single Family Residential Zoning Districts and the campus T1 Transitional Zoning Fees. Next is Human Services Committee, and they recommend our approval of Resolution 20R10, which adopts the City of Evanston Sustainable Pest Control and Pesticide Reduction Policy. That is for action tonight. We also have several appointments for reappointment to the Housing Commission, Richard Mosley Jr., and Joanne Zalomi, and to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Lori Summers. That concludes the consent agenda, Madam Mayor, and I move approval.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fitz.
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Baptiste.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Jean-Baptiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For item A 3.2, move approval of the, wait a minute, this item, I'm sorry. At committee level, the committee voted to hold this in committee, not because we did not think that the work should be done, or didn't approve of the amount of the contract, but because we, the process by which this contract came about was such that the same firm that was contracted with to provide information as to how the work should be done, was also contracted with, through an open bid process, they won the bid to provide the design as to how to, in fact, conduct the work. And there were some questions raised as to why not, why did we not package the entire work of providing information and providing the design in the first place? Because we feel that the firm that ended up with the contract to do the design had an advantage. I mean, they determined what was needed, and then they provided, they competed to provide the design, and they won. And even though they were not the lowest bidder, apparently, they were the best firm. So, we've asked the city manager's office to review the process and come back to us and make sure that we're doing this right. And so, at committee level, in two weeks, hopefully, we'll get some response, and the city attorney is supposed to weigh in as well. Okay? All right. The next item is item A 3.5, move approval of the, what is it? Approve, to move for approval of a contract with Current Technologies in response to RFQ 10-82 for Design and Implementation of an Outdoor Camera System in Southwest and Downtown Evanston. This contract is not to exceed $341,385, which is the total of two federal grants, which we received through the work of Congresswoman Jan Chakowsky, and the entire installation and the maintenance of this, of the system will be funded by the, at 100% from the federal grants.
Second.
Okay, there were a lot of discussions at the committee level on various fronts, a lot of questions for the chief, and for our technology people, as to what the system was. Some of you, you see that there was a map included, and there were questions raised as to placement, the proposed placement of cameras. There were some questions on philosophically, where are we going? So, I'll just throw it open for those who want to weigh in and share their views. At committee level, we had voted, we thought 4 to 1, but Alderman Fitz indicated that she had not voted, so she would get her opportunity to articulate her position, and I guess vote this go-round. So, who's first?
I'm looking for lights. Does anyone want to discuss this? Alderman Rainey.
I'm curious as to why Alderman Fitz didn't vote, because she certainly spoke her mind. Did you forget? I mean, what?
I was listening.
I assumed you voted in favor. No.
I did not.
You did not.
I voted against.
But you did not vote no.
Pardon me?
You didn't vote no.
I did not. I was listening to what was going on, and did not vote.
Well, I'm going to tell you a story of something that happened many, many years ago. The first video camera for neighborhood enforcement and quote-unquote surveillance, which I think is a real misnomer here, was at Howard Street and Custer. It's a little teeny camera, I think it cost $20,000, was posted on a light pole, nobody even knew it was there. It's a screen inside the police outpost, where you can go and watch what's going on on that camera. The first week that camera was installed, we had what was considered kidnapping and hijack, carjacking, at the intersection of Custer and Howard. Guy came to the police station and reported it. I don't even know if Chief Kaminsky was the chief then, it might have been prior to that even. Came in and reported that he had had his car jacked, he had been robbed, and ripped out of his car, and an attempt of assault, et cetera, et cetera. Well, fortunately, we had the camera. So, we went and we viewed the tape, and this is a camera that runs on 8-track tapes, believe it or not, and it's still in operation, last I heard. It was discovered that this was a total hoax, that none of this happened. The whole thing was on camera, and it never happened. So, in addition to quote-unquote surveillance, this also prevents phony crime reports, in some cases. We talked during the meeting, the committee meeting, about the issue of surveillance. Nobody's going to be watching these cameras. I'm encouraging the police department to watch the cameras at, you know, at those times when things generally are happening, whenever that is, and we have all sorts of statistics to tell us when that is. But otherwise, the cameras are not going to be surveilling, providing surveillance for anything. Since the cameras have been put in in the south end of town, I can tell you honestly, and I explained to the committee, I don't know if there's a relationship, but the incident of crime has plummeted on Howard Street. Things really don't happen there anymore. And I explained, you know, the businesses are just as bad as ever, with a few exceptions. There are some wonderful people working on Howard Street, but for the most part, I think Howard Street has deteriorated over the years. But there is no crime there. I just, those of us who have the cameras embrace them, and I guess those who don't have them fear them. I'm not sure, we had a community meeting the other night, and I can tell you, there probably were 70 or 80 people there. The most asked question was, how can we get cameras? How can we get security cameras? So, I don't think, I heard Alderman Fitz talking during Administration Public Works, saying her people are afraid of the cameras. If that's the case, I would suggest that those neighborhoods that want the cameras, get them, and the downtown and other places who don't want the cameras, don't get them. I think it's as simple as that. But I can tell you right now, the people on the south end of town, with the exception of Richard, they want the cameras.
Alderman Fitz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, questions are good. During Administration Public Works, I expressed my concern about the cameras, along with questions about the perception that these cameras would give to people coming into our downtown. There are three targeted areas for the cameras, and in the downtown, there are nine cameras slated to be installed. As the police chief said to us, the location of these cameras is still up for debate, but I see them at almost every intersection within the downtown. And since there are three of us who are aldermen for and share the downtown, I will just express my concern. We've worked very hard to attract people into the downtown. My own experience is that the downtown is very safe, and people feel comfortable on the streets at all hours. I am a little bit more concerned about whether cameras at intersections actually will provide the kind of security that we're anticipating, or whether people will just avoid those intersections if they have crime on their mind. And I referred back to the installation of the blue light phones, which frankly, do give some people a sense of security, but are very rarely used. I would be happy to give up my cameras in the downtown to any alderman who wanted them, but my understanding also is that these cameras are specifically designated for these particular areas. I did take some comfort in the fact that the chief said that we, each individual alderman would have the opportunity to adjust the location of these cameras once they were installed. But the good thing is that they're very portable, and can be removed or relocated at fairly short notice. I did have a question for him about the cost of the maintenance of the cameras after the three-year period. I believe that number was roughly between $20,000 and $30,000 a year to maintain the cameras at that, at that time. So, those were my questions. On the basis of that, I voted no, or intended to vote no, and I would like to hear some other members of the council, from especially those aldermen in the downtown. And also, someone said that there was a picture of the cameras somewhere here, is that? Where is it?
The cameras are right out there.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And I really don't think that adopting this gives any indication that Evanston is not safe. I don't think it reflects a lack of confidence in our law enforcement. It's really just a tool for assisting with our public safety, that's all it is. This only reflects that we care about public safety and I support the program. I'm curious to see how this works as a tool for us. You might not need this every day, but when it does come into play, I think it could be tremendously important, just like the emergency blue light phone. You might go days, weeks, maybe even months, before somebody needs it, but if somebody needs that, or it comes into- needs that, or it comes into play, if a child is kidnapped, something along those lines, this is going to be potentially an extremely valuable tool. Hopefully, we'll never need it for a purpose like that, but I think it would be helpful to have this available in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
One of the requests that I would like to, one of the requests that I would like to make of our staff, and perhaps our community policing officers could perform this, I believe there are hundreds of cameras, hundreds of security cameras, in the downtown and in the areas where there are businesses. And I would like to know if we could get a read on how many cameras are already there that are being used, number one, for surveillance, shoplifting, et cetera, that I would like. I agree with Alderman Wilson, it, they truly are insurance, in case something happens. That's what they are.
Thank you.
And also, the point about what they're going to cost after three years, I, you know, I don't have any confidence in the staying power of technology. I would imagine in three years, they're going to be obsolete, and we'll probably have to go to a new technology. I'm not sure. But I know, over the years with the cameras that we have, every time I've asked for a new camera, I've been told that it's a totally new technology over the last four, I would say, last six years. The technology has changed. Is that not right, Mr. Sloan? Yeah, so, we probably won't be repairing them after three years.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste.
As I stated at the committee level, you know, this direction towards surveillance cameras, I know we want to get away from the word surveillance, and that's the title of the proposal. And that is, in fact, what we're trying to do. We're moving to place cameras to surveil activities of people. And whereas I could understand the specific, the requests that had come before us historically, that said at a particular location, there's a high incidence of criminal activities, we want to deter these. And so, I could see the rationale. And even at those locations, what ended up happening a lot of time is that things moved to other locations. You know, activities just keep going. We've had debates around cameras at Main and Dodge by the 7-Eleven. There were a couple of citizens who were not even within the second ward at that time, who wanted to advocate for it, because a couple of youth were hanging out by the 7-Eleven. I remember that we've talked about some youth hanging out on Central Street by 7-Eleven. I've not heard anybody introduce the notion of cameras there. We've had debates about the, I don't think we've had debates about cameras on Howard Street. We basically deferred to Alderman Rainey. I don't recall the debate, there might have been some debates then.
It was before your campaign.
Oh, okay. And we've, we had discussions about cameras on Dodge and Simpson, Dodge and Emerson, Dodge and Church Street. I know that the chief of police, former chief of police Kaminsky, when he was security, safety chief at the high school, wanted to introduce camera across from the high school on city grounds, and I was opposed to it. And I think they set up some kind of structure to make that happen on their own property. So I can't prevent that. But I think that, you know, the general call that the chief is putting before us that says, look, we have some money that could come our way, let's establish membranes throughout sectors of the city, downtown. And he's got about ten of these cameras identified as to where he would like to place them, parts of the west side, parts of the south side. You know, we're moving away from trying to identify particular problems to solve, and to come with a replacement for what, to me, has been working. Alderman Rainey talks about that crime has dropped at a particular location on Howard Street, and that's great. It has, and you have a camera there. Well, that has dropped also at, in the Canal Park neighbors, neighborhood, when Alderman Drummer was there, because we mobilized and had some direct interaction with some of the youth in the community who were destabilizing the community. We had a meeting just Thursday, and, I mean, we had a police problem solver there, but he had nothing to report in terms of police activities, in terms of calls for services, because basically, we've been able to organize our way into some stability in that area. Fowler, between Lake and Greenwood, had deteriorated, and we've been able to organize ourselves, the neighbors, to make sure that they address those issues. So I think that we are moving away from the kind of fight to assist our youth in particular, I think, who are targeted for the most part, or our younger people. I'm not saying that they're the only ones committing crimes. We're moving away from working to shape behavior, working to have the kind of community effort, as I remember Alderman Holmes was trying to organize. And now, we're moving to set in place the technological tools to do the things that we ourselves are not doing. And I think that ultimately, what it does, it does violate our privacy. It creates an atmosphere downtown, there may be some. But if some independent businesses have set up cameras, fine. But for us to now say, as a policy, as a governmental policy, what we want to do is set up not cameras at locations that needs them, we're not even making that argument. We're saying we're setting up membranes so we can install a number of cameras to, and to be flexible enough when we want to, to be able to multiply the number of cameras that we want to install in the city. And Alderman Wilson, I understand what you're saying. It may not be saying all that about the city, that we are an unsafe city. But it does mean that we are abdicating certain responsibilities that we have, and we're replacing it with a tool that we think is going to mean a diminution of criminal activities. We think that that's going to attack the problem. And I think that that's not the fundamental basis of the problem. I think it's going to continue to remain, it's going to, we're going to have to engage in different tactics in order to try to change the behavior of folks in the community and take responsibility to move it forward. These cameras will proliferate. We'll come back four or five years from now with more cameras in other parts of the west side, you know, and we'll move, certain diverse areas will get more and more activities, more cameras. And downtown area, I guess eventually, you know, every single intersection, we'll have cameras surveilling us. So I'm opposed to that kind of thrust.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of things to say. One of these cameras is in my ward, it's on the corner of Lake and Chicago Avenue. Depends on which side of the lake it is, it's going to be on, whether it's fourth ward or third ward. I don't have any objections to that. A couple of points. I was in London three weeks ago. If any of you know, London has probably the most, one of the most comprehensive camera systems of any major city in the world. I actually never remember even noticing them. But London has used them very, very effectively. They were originally put in place because of terrorism issues in the past, and they are still there. And I was, I never felt as though I was being watched. And London, in the past, has been a very safe city. They put them in place because of IRA issues years ago. So I don't think anyone perceives London as being unsafe because it has these cameras. I think actually, they're very, they're effective for exactly what they were designed to do, was to figure out later what had happened. I can think of two instances in which, one was a camera at the high school recently, and one was a camera at a bank, in which several, a year or two ago, we had a terrible kidnapping, and a young woman was taken by her kidnapper to a bank where there was, and he forced her to take money out of her account. And it was because the, there was an excellent camera image of him, that we were able to track him down. And just recently, there was a camera at the high school that picked up a superb image, and we were able to track down the perpetrator of that issue. I think at the, my understanding is, from the high school, the cameras there have been very effective, and in terms of being able to make the place safer, make people feel that if something happens, there'll be a very quick response. I've been at the high school a thousand times. I actually had to have my son point out to me where they were the other day. It wasn't because I wasn't wearing the correct glasses. I do think that, I don't think that these cameras will give this perception. I don't think people will really even be aware of them. I think that, as Alderman Wilson says, they will help us solve crimes. And we don't have the budget that allows us to have a police officer walk in the beat, which is what my grandfather did for years as a police officer. He knew every single person who walked by. We don't have those resources anymore. If, I wish we did, because it was a great way to have community policing. I don't, and I also want to make one more point, Alderman Shaw-Baptiste, I agree with you completely. We should never have cameras substitute for the activities of the community, in which everyone knows who's on their street, and who's doing the right thing, and who needs some attention. And I completely agree with you and support you in those efforts. And I don't think that these are a substitute for that.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
And I apologize in advance for being redundant in agreement with Alderman Nguyen and Alderman Wilson and Alderman Rainey. I'm in favor of the cameras. I don't believe that they'll necessarily be a deterrent, but I do believe that they can help us catch criminals. I would argue that a citizen that is a victim of a crime will want every piece of technology we have to get the perpetrator. If that's in downtown, or that's on the west side, or the south side, or in northwest Evanston, I don't care where it is. I would say, I don't believe that we should rely on this as a way to do policing for us. We have an outstanding citizen policing effort, we have neighborhood watches, we have block watches, and it does not abdicate citizens and parents from being responsible, and teaching our kids how to do the right thing, and stepping up when you see something wrong happen. The cameras aren't going to do that. What they will do is, when something happens, we will have good data. Which leads me to my next point. We have a lot of anecdotal information, which is fabulous. It's good to hear about the stories that have come from these, the positives of cameras, and sometimes there's negatives. But I would say that when the cameras are, actually, before the cameras are put in place, we should do a research study. We should have where the cameras are going to be, what is the baseline of the crime rate in that area right now, six months from now, nine months from now, twelve months from now, eighteen months from now. So we actually have good information, what happens in those areas. Crime deter, you know, has crime gone down? Have they been used in a way to catch criminals? So that is why I am voting in favor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I just want to speak to the issue of neighborhood watch groups and community groups. I'm concerned that there might have been an implication spoken tonight, that the cameras on the south end of town took the place of any kind of community organizing. And I can tell you right now, that even if it weren't for those cameras, I believe the south end of town would have experienced a vast reduction in crime because of the Brummel Park neighbors, who operate maybe one of the only real legitimate, totally organized watch groups in town, with uniforms, with radios, and they function at a very high level. However, there's something unique about the south end of town. It has two-thirds of Howard Street belongs to the city of Evanston. The other side of the street is a community where, at least once in the last week, there were fifteen shootings and seven murders in one night. And there's a train there, people travel back and forth. You do not send a young mom and the guy next door to her down Howard Street at eleven o'clock at night on block watch, without cameras. These people walk Howard Street every single night, and I'll be darned if I'm going to let them go out there on a night when there aren't cameras, just making sure that nothing happens to them. And so, you know, Canal Park neighbors is a different environment than being in Brummel Park. It's very different. It's really different. And so, I just want to say that these cameras are an absolute insurance policy in addition to a tool for fighting crime, not only in South Evanston, where they're absolutely a requirement in my mind, but all over the city. They're, you know, they're not, they're going to do no harm. They're going to do no harm. So I encourage us to vote for these.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with those who are proponents of the camera program. I think, in the beginning and in the end, the best eyes, the best view of our neighborhoods and our streets are the residents themselves. And because the residents can't be there all the time, and our police can't be there all the time, that the extra eyes, for the purpose of making the record, for the purpose of assisting our problem-solving, crime-solving teams, police teams, that the cameras would be useful. And then, to continue on the thoughts of Alderman Burris, that establishing kind of data points for whether this is an effective program, I don't see us continuing it if the data doesn't show that it's not, that it's effective. If it doesn't work, if it doesn't give us what we need, then I'd see no reason to keep cameras posted on the corners. We may discover otherwise, however.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no problem supporting this for aldermen who want and have identified a need in their wards. I think your arguments are very persuasive. My understanding of what's being proposed, however, is that these are the three target areas, and that we cannot move the cameras outside these target areas. And I would like to, I would like to say that I think that if we could do that, that would certainly change my mind in this. And if we are moving in that direction, as I said, where aldermen have identified a need and a help, and obviously, a boon on Howard Street and James Park and other places, that this is a valuable tool for us to use. I just don't understand why we're blanketing a particular area where I'm concerned that the presence of the cameras and the perceptions of the cameras will create a, an unfortunate and possibly misleading feeling of concern about the safety of our downtown.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
Yeah, this is specifically for Alderman Rainey. If you thought that I said that you guys are not actively doing a lot of work on the south side of town through the Brummel Park neighbors, it's wrong. That's not what I'm saying. And when you wanted to get cameras, and you wanted certain things done on the south end of town, I voted in support of that. So I want, you know, that to be clear. But these, what we're doing is, we're setting up membranes, you know, the capability and cameras in areas where we have not summed up they're specifically needed because we have a high incidence of crime. Because, yes, south, south end of town, but, you know, what are they doing downtown? You know, at this particular point in time? I'm not saying businesses cannot set up cameras, they have. And I'm not saying that the high school should not do the same thing. So we arguing a couple of things here. On the one hand, we're saying where it's needed, it should go, and some folks have said where we can prove it's no longer needed, we should remove it, remove them. But you want to put them in places where it's not been proven that they're needed right now. So it's a very confusing kind of approach that we have, and I commend the chief for trying to do the best he can at this particular point in time. Except, you know, it's left us with the general kind of call, general application that this move represents. It leaves some confusion. It leaves some confusion. And I think that's why we're reflecting, on the one hand, some of us don't want to oppose the thing, but, and, and so we argue that you can remove it afterwards, after it's been proven to not be needed. But you getting ready to support that it be placed in places where you've not established that it's needed. So I think that the approach, great that we got the grant from, you know, through the help of Jan Chakowsky, that's great. But every dime we get, we don't have to go ahead and spend it for purposes that may be, you know, that we think might be great, while in fact, you know, we don't have the specific needs to do that at those locations. So this is a comment that I wanted to make.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I think when Alderman Rainey spoke earlier about the first camera on Howard, I believe at the same time, there was one at Foster, I mean, at Simpson and Dewey. This was a long time away before I became an alderman. And I know when I was elected in 2005, pretty soon after that, we had the discussion about a camera at Foster and Dodge. And I supported that then because the residents supported it. I'm supporting this concept tonight because I have, very seldom do I have a ward meeting or not, block club meeting where people were saying, if we only had a camera. And I think that a lot of the residents really do see this as another way in which to protect the neighborhoods. I don't think people are afraid of the cameras at all. I, I understand some of the points that have been made. If we were just targeting, looking at young people standing on corners and that kind of thing, just to see what they were doing, that's one thing. But when we have areas, I think Ann said, hotspots where we know that there's been crimes, I think the chief said that these cameras will be movable and we can put them and look and while, while something is going on there, and then they could be moved to another area. My question back to, when we were in committee about the backbone, as I think the chief called it, where these cameras could go, I was very interested in that because it spanned the whole city. Meaning that at one time or another, if we looked at all where these could go, actually there could be cameras in northwest Evanston as well as it could be in southwest Evanston. So that was my question about asking where, how that actually worked, to look and see where it would be possible to put cameras. I think that Alderman Fisk's point about if aldermen would like to have them, that they could request them. And I think that maybe the system will really adapt to that or be, you know, could apply to that eventually if people did want them. I am hoping that the chief was sincere when he said that the aldermen in the, what is it, the first, one, two, and three zones now, which is downtown, west, and south Evanston, that we would be consulted in terms of the final destination of where those cameras could be. Because I think that we do know where there might be activity that is unacceptable to the people who live in the areas, that they would feel much more maybe secure with the cameras. And I certainly, I continue to work to establish block clubs in my ward on every block because there is no substitute for that. But I think the cameras can certainly be, can be a help to it.
Thank you. We've spent a lot of time on this, and I have two more aldermen who've asked to speak, Alderman Rainey and Alderman Burris. And then if everyone has said your point, we don't need to say it again.
Well, I, I would never pretend to encourage an alderman to do something they didn't want to do, but there's something different about the downtown, and that is that everybody goes to the downtown. So I've been watching since the issue of crime and everything is on everybody's mind. I, I watch the crime statistics very carefully, and I don't see that the downtown is, is any safer than my neighborhood. And I think there are plenty of spots in the downtown that could benefit from a camera. And so I would really encourage you to not, and I'm talking to Alderman Fisk, I know there are other, other aldermen who, who represent the downtown, but I'm encouraging you to at least sit down with the chief and take a look at the statistics and see where your hotspots are and, and maybe give it a try from, you know, the cameras are mobile. And I, I'm just not so sure it's as much a Nirvana as you're trying to make it out to be. I know that's good public relations, but one of the problems that the south end of town faced years ago is that the way to deal with crime was to sweep it under the rug and not talk about it and not, and not recognize it and hope it would go away or that nobody would notice it. And that's just not an effective way to create a civilized community. So I think you should just sit with the chief and see where his recommendations are.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I promise to be brief. It would be great to actually hear from the chief about why the zones were chosen. I know we have a lot of information in our packet, but the benefit for citizens, I think that would be helpful. I also think that the downtown, well, I, I do appreciate Alderman's fist wanting to have given appearance and a perception of, of safety and, and sort of to make this notion that we're Mayberry downtown. I would really rather have the reality of safety versus the perception of safety. And I'd love to hear from the chamber and from merchants about what they think about that. You know, the purse snatchings and the shoplifters going out. My, my personal favorite in the downtown are how many bikes are stolen on, on a yearly basis, particularly in the summer. I know I had at least one stolen in front of my workout facility. And if we had cameras, we could have broken up the bike ring probably a lot sooner than, than we have in the downtown. So once again, I'd love to hear from the chief about the, the zones. And have we heard anything from the chamber, merchants, about this? Thanks.
Chief, did you want to answer that?
I didn't realize it was optional, Your Honor. Just, just quickly on, on the zones, one of the things that, that we worked very hard with, with the IS department, Bruce and Richard, was developing areas where we had blind spots and could expand the system. One of the things that I mentioned in the committee meeting about the backbone of the system was, we have targeted areas where it was difficult for us to move these into. One of the difficulties is if we don't build that infrastructure now in the downtown or in the zones as they're currently defined, we're not going to have the resources to do it in the future. And that was a big driver in the selection of the zones. And also from those selection of zones, if there was a need to expand the system or desire to expand the system, it's doable from these three points throughout the city. That was, that was the overall architecture, the, the concept of what selected those areas.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Well, I don't think I'm creating Mayberry, but it's, it's, I do, I do really like our downtown. And, and I also am a retail store owner in the downtown, and I spend a lot of time there late at night and walk home, and, and so I feel that I can, I can speak a little bit to, to the downtown. I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there are places that these cameras aren't going to see. And maybe, chief, you can tell me how, what, at what distance these cameras are actually functioning? I mean, are we going to be able to identify someone mid-block or further with the cameras? Are the, are cameras at two corners going to be able to see in, in the middle of a block? Or just how far are the cameras functional?
First of all, I, I want to say that the cameras are high-definition cameras that extends the range on them considerably. And it now gets down to camera placement to answer those specific questions. We've had, even with the existing cameras we have, we've imposed upon the forestry department a number of times to trim trees and, and enhance the, the viewing area of our currently existing cameras. And so those issues are kind of based on placement, buildings, and a, and a number of other factors that I can't speak in generalities. When the system gets further along, we have an idea of how many cameras we can afford. After the, the backbone is established, I'll be able to talk to the aldermen whose wards these will impact on and show you several options of what we can accomplish.
Okay. Let me ask you just one other question about the backbone, because that was something that I'm, I'm not particularly clear on. So the backbone, once these are, these membranes are established in these three areas, the cameras are going to be able to be placed within any part of that backbone system and operate a wireless operation? Is that correct?
I'd, let me ask Mr. Sloan to join me because we're, we're out of my depth technologically.
So when we set up this backbone, you usually need line of sight. So if you have a camera on this corner, it has to find a wireless unit somewhere on a building and point to it. There's other ways of doing it, but that's generally what we do. You can also go from one point to another and then daisy chain down the street using light poles and things of that nature. But generally speaking, you need line of sight to a building that has a wireless unit on that gets back to our network.
So when we're talking about going to James Park or to somewhere else, we would have to piggyback these units onto one another or put up some sort of wireless?
If we were putting a camera in James Park, I would think we'd put something on the roof of the Levy Center and beam it to the park. Right now, we, we beam a signal, a wireless signal from the top of the Levy Center over to the animal shelter.
Okay.
So we are already going, we're already going across the park.
Okay.
That's relatively easy from there.
But, but to get from downtown to James Park, how would you do that? That's my last question. Thank you.
Well, I, I wouldn't, because I would be using the Levy Center, which has a fiber backbone to it.
Okay.
The fiber connection to Levy Center, that gets into our network. So the best thing to do is branch off of one of our buildings that has fiber. And that's the key thing. And when we go from that, one of those buildings, then we can go wirelessly, we can move the signal from point to point till we get to where we want to go.
So there's nothing, so we could go ahead and put one at James Park today? Is that, I mean, as soon as?
I mean, it's, it's definitely possible. It's feasible. It's not part of what we've designed at this point.
Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve the police outdoor camera project design and installation contractor. City clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
No.
Seven to two. The motion passes. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yes, Madam Mayor. By the way, item eight point, eight, three point six has already been passed, but at committee, we did ask the director of public works to come back and give us an update right before they go to purchasing. Because as you all know, during our budget deliberations, there were a number of proposals to reorganize streets and sanitation, to privatize garbage collection, and to shift our staff, employees in the streets and sanitation department to do recycling. So even the, while they're projecting right now as to the resources that they will need and the equipment that they would need, it's still not totally clear, so we have asked that they come back with an update. We support this acquisition, which is being funded at 50% by state funds. And the director of public works has explained that this is a side-loading truck that will be very useful to the recycling in the commercial area. However, we're asking for some interim kind of report before they go forward. Okay? So then moving on to item eight six, move passage of ordinance eight dash O dash 10, which amends section three dash five dash six B of the city code to increase the number of class B liquor licenses from 14 to 15 due to the new corporate ownership of Flat, Flat Top Grill located at 707 Church Street.
Second. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I support this issuance of license 100%. However, I stand to discuss the process here. We, we introduced an ordinance weeks ago to approve this license based on other individuals. And my concern was, we received the new names in the, in the interim, the other individual was rejected. In the interim, we have never received a new set of minutes from the hearing at which this, this group here was approved. So I'm, all I'm saying is, I, I really have a lot of confidence in the Liquor Control Commission because I can find out what went on when I read those minutes and...
I think that's a very good point, Alderman Rainey, and we had a change in staff at the liquor commission and...
I was sure there was some reason, I just wanted to remind...
We'll make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
That's the end of my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen, who's?
Rainey.
Rainey. Sorry.
Under Planning and Development Resolution 28 R10, Reserving the $6,992,370 of the city's bond volume cap allocation for the year 2010, reads for Single Family Housing and Industrial Commercial Revenue Bond Program. I move approval.
Second.
Madam Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
The reason I rise is we had a discussion in, in planning and development regarding this title. It is also the title of the resolution in your packet. I was told the reason why they had this title was so that we wouldn't be restricted to anything. I, I find that the title does exactly the opposite. I am objecting to the single-family housing reference in the title and would appreciate the approval of an amendment that says for Housing and Industrial and Commercial Revenue Bond Program.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. City clerk, could we have a roll call vote of the motion as amended?
Wait, do we, that's just an amendment. Could we just say aye or nay?
Aye. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval. As amended.
Been moved and seconded to approve the motion as amended. A city clerk?
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
That's my report.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Human Services is...
No report.
No report. We are at call of the wards. Call of the wards, Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll be brief. I just, I wanted to report to the rest of the council on a very productive meeting that Alderman Wilson and I participated in with the city council, Chamber of Commerce Committee. We've done something different this year with the city chamber committee. We are visiting or inviting to meet with us different sectors of the business community. In this past week, we met with our banking community to talk about what they're doing and understand what their situation was, and to talk more broadly about our economic development efforts and the new members of our team that have been hired and ways in which both...
which both the banking community and the city's Economic Development Group can work together. A number of very good ideas came out of that meeting, and we have all agreed to continue meeting as a group in the future. So that was my report on that issue. The only other thing that I would like to suggest is that with respect to the census, because I'm a parent of a high schooler like several of us are here, we get these robo-calls occasionally, you know, and it's an excellent way of informing everyone in the high school. And I'm wondering if our census folks have talked to the high school about having a robo-call go out urging all families to return their census form. It's very effective in letting you know what, it'll leave a message on your answering machine. I think it's a way of reaching the parents of at least 3,000 students, so I'd like to suggest that if that, I know it hasn't been done, because I haven't gotten the robo-call, but I'm wondering if they would do that.
Thank you, it's a great idea.
That's right, District 65 has the capability as well, so I think that would be an excellent idea, and I'm co-PTA President of Nichols for a few more minutes, and so I'm going to ask that it be sent on the Nichols blast and urge that the PTA Council get it on every single school's email blast. But I think District 65 could do us a favor as well.
Well, it does them a favor too, they get...
Yeah, oh, yes, I think all of us have learned $980 per person per year, so...
Thank you, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the opportunity this past, or yesterday, actually, to attend the Joanne Hirschfield Memorial Poetry Awards, and this was a wonderful event, and I was very, very impressed with the quality of the talent of the poets and the writers who were awarded at the events. And, which brings me to another note, and I want to acknowledge the passing of Dr. Hi Hirschfield. Dr. Hirschfield and his wife established this award competition. Dr. Hirschfield was a physician, a community activist, a writer, and so many other things that I can't possibly list in a reasonable amount of time tonight. But just invite everybody to maybe do a little bit of digging around to find a little bit more about Dr. Hirschfield, and join me in celebrating the life and accomplishments of an individual who really lived a remarkable life, who inspired a lot of people, and really did a lot of great things to build stronger communities and to make Evanston and the community around us a much better place.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes? Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If this possibly is Mayberry, this is certainly time to announce the annual Garlic Mustard Poll at Perkins Woods. It's an annual event. Commissioner Larry Saffordon and the steward of the Forest Reserve, Libby Hill, put on this event every year to get rid of an invasive, I don't know if it's a weed or plant or whatever, that has continued to grow there. It will happen May 1st and May 2nd, 10 to noon, and there'll be a lot of the refreshments, and there'll also be sort of an explanation and an understanding of what Perkins Woods is. It's the only forest preserve in the city of Evanston, and it's actually the smallest one, I think, in Illinois. So it's quite a special thing to have. It really shows you how Evanston and our entire environment looked before it was developed. So it's May 2nd, May 1st and 2nd, 10 to noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, to the 25% of our residents who have not sent in their census form, send in the form, please and thank you. If you need the form, call 866-872-8686 and get it and send it in. Find it in your mail pile, just get it in, please. Second of all, ward meeting for the 7th Ward on Thursday, May 20th, at the Evanston Ecology Center, with our Public Works Director, Suzette Robinson, making a celebrity appearance to discuss all those issues that are so filling my inbox. We celebrated Earth Day on Saturday at Howell Park in the 7th Ward, which borders the 6th Ward, and by planting Evanston's first public rain garden. A rain garden is a garden that is really amenable to landscapes that lie low, that collect water, and Howell Park is for a good part of our wet season underwater. And it was a wonderful collaboration with the Initiative for Sustainability and Energy at Northwestern. They were the primary funder of the plant materials for this garden. The Highland Garden Club, the Garden Club of Evanston, the Autobahn Chicago Region, Citizens for Greener Evanston, and the Center for Neighborhood Technology. So thank you very much. If you go to Howell Park, which is a block north of Central Street at Stewart, you'll see a garden right now marked off by some fencing. But it was on Saturday that a bunch of people got out there and planted the thing. So I need to give express thanks to Donna Wolf and Judy Pollock. I think they are a subcommittee of Citizens for Greener Evanston for this rain garden, who along with Janice Wesley, Bill Iring, Roberta Buchanan, Reed Haggy, Hal Sprague, and Eleanor Ravel, and four Northwestern students who came from multi-disciplines, Kevin Chu, Chrissy Bernardo, Mary Rose Conry, and Morgan McMillan, who planted this. And thanks in advance to Alyssa Meltzer and one of our unsung heroines, Sue Carlson, who was awarded last week the Cook County 2010 Unsung Heroine Award. These two residents who have volunteered, I think, to help us maintain the rain garden. Don't expect great things from the garden for the next couple of years. It will take at least that long for the roots to go deep and the plants to grow tall. It should be just lovely. And one thing that surprised me about how this garden unfolded is that our first, our initial meeting on this, organizing meeting, was in end of February, two months ago. So in two months, they pulled it all together, gathered the resources and the volunteers, and so with special thanks to Doug Gaynor for letting it happen, and Stephanie Levine and Paul D'Agostino for facilitating the process, helping us with the siding and clearing the way, literally and figuratively, to make it happen. This is one of those projects where my only job was to stay out of the way, as alderman. So thank you to everyone who made that happen, and that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Alderman Rainey, I'm going to give part of your call of the wards report. One solution to the census problem is to go door-to-door with Alderman Rainey. That really gets people to fill out the forms, which is amazing.
Voluntarily, voluntarily...
All right, Alderman Rainey, you can give the rest of your report. I didn't think you'd get that part right.
I was ordered, I was ordered by the mayor who was there dragging me every step of the way. Speaking of that neighborhood that we were in, Brummel Park had a battle of the blocks a couple of weeks ago on cleanup day, and there was actually a contest, people signed up to participate, and I was the judge. I was very impartial, and I awarded the award to the 100 block of Clyde, which I just have to tell you, eight years ago, would have been just an absolute nightmare. So it was an amazing thing, and Brummel Park neighbors purchased enormous amounts of spring bulbs and fall bulbs and planting materials, and that's what the block got. During the week, Lehman Walker and I went on the amazing tour of Howard Street, where I had him out of the car, up close and personal, in doorways, and he was being dragged all the way also. We met as many people as we could in the stores, and I think he's just going to be fabulous in helping our community, especially in the area of economic development. You all heard about, I don't know, months and months ago, the very sad story about 415 Howard going into receivership. It's not always a sad story, though. I mean, if things aren't working out and a receiver takes over and brings back life to the project, that's a good thing. And on Friday, we met the, for the second time now, the new owners of 415 Howard. 415 Howard has been sold, that is the 17-story building on Howard Street, it's been sold, and amazing new owners called Crossbeam, and they are going to be under new management. And we saw all the plans for all the exciting updating they're going to do. I know it seems like a new building, but there's going to be a lot of new lighting and landscaping, and they're actually going to change the color of the building. That's very strange, but they are. St. Francis Hospital did it and had great results, and so is the, so is the new owner. So anyway, that's what happened there. And on tomorrow night, this is for all of us, tomorrow night is the NSP2 meeting for contractors and whoever else wants to come and get a better understanding of the 18 and a half million dollars that we receive for two census tracts. If you're interested in buying a home, if you're interested in helping fix one up, you need to be at this meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night, in room 2200. And then, on May 5th, Alderman Burrus and I are going to have our first joint ward meeting, and that's going to have to do, on May 5th, at the Levy Center at 7 o'clock. That will have to do with traffic congestion and issues on Oakton and anything else anybody wants to talk about. So that will be May 5th, 7 o'clock, at the Levy Center.
Thank you. Alderman Burrus?
Yes, we're excited about our joint meeting. We want to hear from you about the Oakton Dodge intersection. Also, wanted to do a shout-out about the economic development team has come together pretty nicely here in the city. I'm sure most of you already know, but in case other people don't, we have two new economic development planners, Annette Hogan, who's been at the city for a while, and Johanna Niden, who many of you know from being on the Plan Commission for three years. And those of us on the Economic Development Committee, we have electronic packets, it's really exciting, and so we're very excited about them being on board. I also wanted to talk about, on Saturday night, I actually went to the YJC benefit, and I was really touched and refreshed to hear from three Evanston youth that have really benefited from this organization in learning how to interview for a job, put a resume together, keep a job. It was fabulous. There are 400 people or more, actually Alderman Tindham is one of the people that put this together. But what I want to say is, the businesses in the community, please reach out to this organization. We need more of our youth hired. I think it goes back to something that Alderman Jean-Petis says over and over again, and sometimes we think he's a broken record, but the youth, the youth, the youth. And if we don't step up and get them jobs and other things to do, then we have no one to blame when they do things we don't like, except ourselves. So please, businesses, work with YJC. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Alderman Rainey for the suggestion to meet with the police chief. I'm going to absolutely take her up on that suggestion, looking at appropriate locations for the outdoor cameras in the downtown. Regarding Earth Day, on Davis Street in the alleys, we have our own little Earth Day that's starting. A number of volunteers are actually using areas of the parking lots where they abut the buildings and creating really gorgeous gardens, and in the areas between the various parking lots along the businesses. People are also planting vegetables and beautiful flowers, so I invite you all to walk down the alleys of downtown Evanston and get a real backdoor view of some beautiful work in the downtown. I, and more business message here, I want to make a reference to Planning and Development, and by extension, the Plan Commission, that we work on clarifying the language of the zoning ordinance as it relates to non-conforming uses, specifically in the T1 and T2 zoning districts. That's something that was suggested by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that all of us who have been through the great, the great room discussion feel that is absolutely necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Jean-Petis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, we had a great meeting with the Canal Park neighbors with Suzette Robinson starring. She did a great job and answered every question that people had. We also met with the neighbors in the area of Greenwood and Hartree, and one of the highlights of that meeting was that I was able to go and visit 2100 Greenwood. Remember the old nail factory that we turned into a, you know, condo, live-work space? Well, it's 90% occupied, but except, you know, a good number of them are rentals. But they're beautifully done. If you remember the design with an open courtyard, et cetera, et cetera, so I was really pleasantly surprised to see what was going on there. And I'm not pleasantly, you know, surprised as to what's going on at the Sienna Project building. Water is pooling in the areas where the west buildings were not completed. I did speak to Jeff Murphy, who quickly moved to get somebody to pump out the water, but it rained yesterday, so I'm sure the water has repooled there, and it's significant. I spoke to the city attorney and have asked him to put some pressure on Inland Bank to stay on top of the situation, to make sure that they're not allowing the situation over there to deteriorate. And there are a couple of signs that we might be able to get some different developers interested in coming in, so we have a couple of meetings lined up to pursue some different options. The other matter you guys know about already is that Evanston Plaza is in receivership, and you received the email, we did go over there, we met with the receiver, and he had a lot of ideas. He is going to allow Panini to put up his sign and, you know, do some different things and look at leases. We also are planning a meeting with the merchants there and the receiver, so we can address their issues, and hopefully be able to bring some new directions, I'm hopeful, but we've got to wait and see. And lastly, speaking about youth, Evanston Youth Initiative Group is doing a major annual event at Fleetwood Jordaine on May 1st at 1 o'clock, and again, what they're focusing on is encouraging fathers to get involved in the lives of their children, in their educational life. So that is all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, city clerk?
Alderman Wilson, I mean Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Congratulations, we're out of here at 10:10.